... United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need a person to approve the agenda as presented.
So that's all we have?
No, for this agenda.
Oh, I'll make them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Take your session, we did not have a reading of the minutes, council should have a copy, we don't have, technically, these citizens' remarks, please come up to the podium. Please come up front here, state your name and address for the record. Comment on the previous ones?
I have some comments. Go ahead, okay. I just need to...
Thank you. Glad you could hear that.
Sit down.
Um, which way should I sit? This is better.
It'd be nice if they had a microphone, we all could hear.
I thought it was all loud. My name is Sandra Colletta, but I'm the Executive Director Emeritus of the Linkwood Youth Center in New Cumberland. We serve the West Shore School District, so we serve kids from Goldsboro, Newberry Town, Eders, Lewisberry, Lemoore, all of us. So, that's why I'm here tonight. I came last year, and actually, a couple of people from your borough answered my visitor.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I tried to turn it down.
You guys hear me?
We got it.
Okay. Um, and basically, I just wanted to let you guys know about an event that we're having. And I wrote a bunch of paper for the NOS in over here, and you guys can take it. We're celebrating our 10th year anniversary, Saturday, December 6th, from 12 to 3:00. And there's gonna be a lot of stuff for the kids to do, it's approved to the community. Santa Claus, bloody nails, food, bouncy houses, and all that kind of stuff. So, um, we need the support of our communities, and we would love one representative from every borough of the Serb to come, because we're gonna have a ceremony at 1:00, and just, you know, recognize all the different communities that we serve. Uh, I don't know if you guys know about us, but we've been around for a long time, and we're the only free after-school program for youth in the West Shore community, from fourth grade through 12th grade. We get over 40 kids a night. Um, we serve my home-cooked meal, we have mentors, home workout, we have a big gym, and a lot of fun, all, is it you that gave me this?
Yeah, I'm with me. I brought some pretzels and stuff.
That's right.
Chris, I brought pretzels.
All right. So, so you saw the facilities, it's just getting, but obviously, the need right now is even greater, so I'm just gonna leave the information here. I hope you don't find out if I don't stay for the whole meeting. Okay? Um, I'll leave it on the table over here, and I encourage you guys, let the community know, if anybody has kids, it's gonna be a nice event, but also, come and get to know us, because it's a great resource for, to keep our kids out of trouble, from 3 to 6 after school. It's really great for parents, so, um, yeah. Does anybody have any questions? No? Well, I appreciate you letting me come and speak to everybody in a while, just so that we stay on your radar, and, uh, thanks for coming and bringing the presence. Did I send you a thank you card?
Uh, definitely.
Okay. Sometimes I forget.
Another wall, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much. Have a good meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get my stuff over here.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, any further citizens' remarks?
I have a few remarks. All right, Joyce McAdrey, we live by South York Street, living in Goldsboro, obviously. Um, I just have been thinking of the past month after a special meeting, which was really special, I might say, about some things that I think have been brought up with the current council and the future council. And I know some visitors working on handbooks, and I'm sure it's gonna be concise handle, but I would really like to see, um, a really concise code of conduct for the council members, because I think a lot of things that were put out on Facebook and social media, there were council members involved, and I think it caused some divisiveness at Halloween, and I, as a citizen, really did not appreciate it. Um, you know, Halloween trick-or-treats for the kids, it's, the council decided in September, it would be the 30th, that should've been it, period. Um, I've noticed some personal animus with each other in here, and I don't think it's appropriate. Um, you know, you represent the residents of Goldsboro, and everybody has a freedom of speech, but I think that council members and employees of the borough should be held at a higher standard. If you wanna go on the square and shout out what you feel, that's fine, but not when you're representing the populace. So, if that can be included in your handbook, it might need a strict code of conduct. I did get a hold of a code of conduct that said, you know, um, for disciplinary reasons that, you know, there was, first, a fine, I think the fine should be dealt, and then, I would say, renewal from the council, you can't behave yourselves, and represent the people that you would like to talk to them, period. End of discussion. Um, the other thing that I really didn't understand at the last meeting was Mr. Rich Creek was put off termination, and then, he was suspended for it. And I really don't have a clear understanding of why, and I think that that was important. I think it was done to more publicly humiliating. So, I, and, and that's just the kind of behavior that I don't think we need to make the council run smoothly and the town run smoothly. I don't want that set as an example to younger people coming on council, newly-elected people. I think everybody should work together and respect everybody's ideas. Whether you agree with them or not, no one's gonna agree all the time. But, you know, hear each other out, and then, you know, don't throw cannonballs at each other, especially on social media. Um, you know, if a pole needs to be taken within the borough, Goldsboro has a site, do you agree with this? Yes, no, maybe, it's as simple as that. Um, that's basically all I have to say, and I think, you know, Mr. Rich Creek has a lot to offer, and he's on his way to retirement, right? Um, and I think that it was not appropriate, or for the borough's best interest, to even entertain, um, his termination, because he has a lot of knowledge that we need for his predecessors to go on, to build a strong foundation. And, you know, I'd just like to see everybody work together, whether you're friends, you're not friends, everything has good ideas, some are better than others. Um, but that's basically all I have to say, um, except one more thing. Newberry Township, good job on the parts, the abandoned vehicles in town. Um, and the new year's topic that came up at the last meeting, I think is a great thing for the community to get together, whatever you decide to drop. Personally, I think Middletown is a radiation symbol, but you would wanna have something that represents your town. And there's history in Goldsboro, we have a baseball player, we have a sewing factory, there, you know, and I think people will come to the borough just for the event, you know? That's just my opinion. But, you know, if you're all getting along, everybody can put in their idea, and come up with the best idea. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. President, may I address this lady, and I wanted to ask her a question? Do you have access to, we record these meetings, okay? Have you, have you ever watched any of the recordings?
I've, I've watched some of them, I, you know, unfortunately, I just retired, so my ability to get to the meetings prior was not happening because I was busy. Um, so, no, I did, I have not seen the whole thing, but I, just in the past two meetings I've attended, the, the tension is not dropped.
So you were here at the last meeting?
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, first citizens' remarks? All right, hearing none, police report?
Good evening, council. Good evening. The month of October in the borough, when they had one fork to a fence, which was animal bite, we issued two citations, 12 warnings, and we had 42 other calls for service, those were abandoned vehicles, child line reports received, EMS calls, erratic driver, fire department calls, patrol patrols, harassment, information received, mental health warrants, service, service cones, lanes, traffic hazards, and welfare checks. You guys had asked, a few months ago, about speeding was a specific place, and if we pick that box up there, a lot of things were based upon the data that we received for specific timeframes on the traffic, which I just don't want to share, that's where that came from, based upon the data that we had. Although, it wasn't a high volume of violators, they still should have did, there was some violators that came through, so we picked the best timeframe we could possibly kind of base upon that data, and that's what we were looking for, so, just for the moment. Other than that, I don't want to have anything, just be conscientious. I always, you know, talk about, um, certain tips, well, it's starting to get cold out, as everyone has taken notice today, by having worn jackets, which means all of us wanna be in a warm car, start up your cars, just be conscientious when you do that, and you go back inside your house. Sometimes there's some individuals that like to take advantage of your nice warm car that has the keys to it, so. Just, I'm not saying don't do it, but just be conscientious. That's all I have here, anything for me?
No. Were you guys, I wonder if I read the yellow boat?
Were we with them?
No, did you get rid of the yellow boat?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't believe so.
Yeah, there was a yellow boat that was dumped down there a couple of months ago, and somebody said it was gone today, is that camper still up there?
I have no idea. As of last night, it was. I believe, well, at one point, we did speak to whoever was in charge of the fish commission on that particular, uh, month, until they replaced it, and, and told them that we had it, that you guys had a boat down there, so, glad to see that they removed it. If there's a camper down there, we'll try, I'll try to make that phone call and see if they can take care of that as well.
Yeah, that was brought over from the island, one of the waters, and somebody was supposed to take it, but, uh, I'll put it through, yeah, I guess.
Unfortunately, we don't have the right just to...
Well, right.
Take that boat on a public street.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
All right, fire department report, uh, for the month of October, we had 20 calls, two structures, two natural cover brush fires, one pole wire ban on one desk, four automatic alarms, two auto accidents, seven fire police calls, one motor rescue, and two public services. Um, the apparatus are hitting the 360 cameras installed, they've got all of them done, uh, they're calibrated, in the process of calibration. Um, premature or not, January, the fire department is going, we're looking at teaming up with the church in the borough, and hosting a dinner, a thank you dinner for the residents of the borough. So, uh, we're in the early process of putting that together now, but it's gonna be open to all residents of the borough. We'll set up RS3 PM1 to follow up that, and that's all I have. Anything else for the fire police reports? Any motion to accept the, uh, fire police reports?
How second?
All in favor? Both? Mayor's report?
Nothing to report tonight.
That comes later. Questions for the solicitor? Under his. All right, uh, we need a motion to accept the mayor's report. All in favor? Both? All right, E.L., H., and P. report, and water company report? Any questions for them? Need a motion to accept the, uh, E.L., H., and P. and water company reports? Second? All in favor? Both? Uh, engineer's report? All right, the engineer's report? Uh, solicitor's report, the update on, uh, on our agreement for connection of service.
You did forget that.
Uh, motion on the engineer's report?
Maybe not.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? All right, solicitor's report?
All right, uh, yeah, so, as an update on the first, uh, item, I did provide a copy of the agreement to Charlie to further coordinate with the property owner. That'll be step one, to get that signed, so that, uh, they will pay, and that's sort of funding to, uh, account for our preparation and submission of petition to the PUC. That's the jurisdictional component, if you remember. Um, once we receive that back, we'll move on to the actual remaining portion of connecting with the electric, but that's, that's item one.
Uh, are we able to see the email that they received from the state, why they would not provide service to you?
Sure, yeah, I can, I can absolutely ask that. I just got the contact information for the property owner, and, and that would be something that we include in the petition. I think I touched upon that at the last meeting. But, we're going to want to show that service cannot be provided.
We wouldn't react for it, must provide the service.
We would, we're gonna wait till we get approval from the PUC that this would not be jurisdictional, uh, because it would be outside of borough municipal boundaries, and then, once we receive that, we would then move forward with completing the service.
A vote if we're gonna connect the service or not?
Uh, certainly, and I'm...
There's several, several of us don't agree with that.
Well, there was previously a vote to pursue me to look into this.
Right.
Uh, if that has changed, obviously, I would...
Well, that's gonna have to be an item, it's gonna be voted on.
If I'm correct, that was, that was to look into if it was viable and legal to pursue the hookup, and the reason why it needs to go to the PUC wasn't a vote to approve the li, uh, the hookup.
Okay, uh, if there's a change of heart here, that should be made sooner or later before we accept money from the property owner to prepare the petition.
Well, we didn't think we were to the point that anybody accepted any money. I mean, obviously, there was a pole or transformer that was taken over the hill for some reason, which is not needed down there, so obviously, it was already been set up for it.
I'm not aware of any work being done to connect any service whatsoever.
Had nothing to do with that, man.
And why was the transformer in boxes?
But we can put lighting in here.
But you don't need a transformer for lighting.
If you do.
You do.
And only one of them on.
So every light, every light in the borough has a transformer on it.
So I do a tree.
So I can walk out here, and there's a, there's a transformer on a pole with a light. Okay, but then, stop that, stop.
You run the whole.
Okay, then, that makes no sense.
This is a light, it's an outlet. To do a lighting right there by this, this is vicious, and then one down at the dam when they use it. That's where the transformer's set to do that light, and the outlets for the, you guys is fishing derby, now you decide not to do fishing derby.
Well, that wasn't up, that wasn't up there, what it was up to them.
We can't order fish, decided not to do it.
Right, well, I'm just saying, no, everybody decided not to do it, so now the outlets and stuff are all there. So they're, they're actually worthless, but...
Well, yeah, now you have a water pole, and they're plugged, they're already in there, so it's a box lock, but...
Yeah, they can't.
They can't hook up the electric?
No.
All right.
Now, that's why you want people break the leads off them, so you plugged them and it didn't work.
My, my concern remains, I'm doing whatever council wants, so if that has changed, I'm not going to pursue this.
Well, we're, honestly, I'm gonna say it straight up, I'm kind of not for it, because ever since that guy purchased that property, something happened that made the York Fish guys back out from doing that, and that's been done for a year down here. Now there's nobody gonna do fishing anymore. The biggest thing is they didn't want anybody on the other side there.
Right, but the reason northern York backed out.
Yeah.
Is they're pulling down at their clubhouse, I'm a member there, and that's where they're gonna put their efforts out to that pond.
So, something else happened, I've never heard of it either.
Fallow, fellow, fellow, give them full permission to use, to use all that out there.
That's something that we...
Yeah.
They brought up to a vote for, we even said they're providing service.
But remember, he is a borough, he is a borough resident.
He is a borough resident. Definitely, he's not, the official property goes on the other side of the creek.
Yeah, all right, uh, just for my updated direction on this, would it be okay for me to still call the property owner and get in contact with him to get what you were referencing earlier, like, uh, the refusal letter from MedEd?
Yeah, because they have power, they have laws that run right up on the roof, so why wouldn't they hook him up?
But then, anticipating, would it be best then to include an agenda on next month for, to discontinue this entirely? Or what, what direction would you like me to pursue?
Well, you don't need to collect any money from anybody, because nobody's made a decision on it yet. I mean, they could kinda look into it and see if, you know, the PUC was gonna allow it, I mean, I, I don't think we're allowed to, because he's saying that the borough is not...
No, no, I'm telling you, there's a line of decisions for the PUC whenever you submit petition for declaratory order, that you're providing municipal service just outside your boundary to a discreet number of customers that's not open to public, they will generally approve that petition, which is why I suggested property owner pay for it rather than borough pay for it, and previously, there was interest for me to pursue that petition.
You had just said outside the borough.
Yes, if so, Mr. Realtree.
I thought you said that there is a resident of the borough.
He is a resident, he owns a merchant, he owns property, he owns more property in Goldsboro than he does in Newbury, what I'm saying. Where, what of the property?
He owns everything up to the top of the hill with the fish. But you said that's just outside of the borough.
This property that we're talking about would be providing service for one connection, if I understand it, on a split parcel, portion of which, which is in Goldsboro, but it can't be compliant, because it's anticipated in Newbury.
If, I'm sorry, if, if we do decide to supply power, is the borough gonna collect any monies for that?
Yeah.
We will, there'll be meters set up.
So part of it, what we would prepare...
And he has to shake all the equipment and stuff, too.
Part of what we would prepare in petition would be the commitment that they would be treated like any other customer?
And if this does happen, would we be under the PUC rule at all?
So that's why we would do the petition first, as a prerequisite to make sure that that did not happen. If they did not make the petition, then we would not move forward with the petition.
How's that gonna work, the repair of the line if a tree comes down, or, uh, transformer blows, or repairs need to be made on his property? How is that?
It would dedicate the facilities to the borough, so it would be incorporated into boroughs.
And that I understand, but getting a truck back there or doing any kind of work is not easy at all.
It's not gonna be back, it's gonna be out front, everybody hates it.
But then, I sent a flood plain, so what, what restrictions are there, a flood plain?
Anything that we get to after the approval from the PUC would be designing exactly how it would be connected to the property, so that would be compliant with any and all applicable laws and regulations.
Where is the delineation line for the township and the borough?
Right at the bridge. So, halfway across the bridge.
All right, so the lines would run across the bridge, up to the gated entrance?
Yep. Which is outside of borough, right?
So that I'm running through your town.
Yep.
And there's no lines, where's that line come to, off of Valley, right into the house on the hill? Or to Stone House there in the form? Where does that line come from?
Stone House in the form.
Yeah, the farmhouse.
Oh, uh, yeah, that comes from Valley, that way.
Okay.
It's, it's all, it's the same distance, to go from that way, as it is to come on through.
And MedEd's not willing to extend that line of beds, they don't want it. It's over a quarter mile.
Well, they just extended it all the way back to the house on the hill, that's over a quarter mile.
He paid for that.
Yeah, sure, he paid for that.
Yeah, he did.
Well, the man, what is MedEd?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's a...
And, and see, that's what I understand, if, if that guy on the hill paid for that, for the install, instead of sinking the money over here, why don't he just take that money and sink into MedEd and install?
If Riley's willing to pay us, but not willing to pay MedEd. Oh, no, MedEd doesn't want to do this, that will be a little, that, okay, MedEd does not wanna do this.
Yeah.
It's not, he doesn't wanna pay, he wants to like, he, I work, but he didn't.
Well, he owned the property, most of the property, he got a camp, he got all the digger, he was going to...
No, he's building a house in Old Barn, and they're really...
Well, that would be a new area.
Yeah, it's not, it's not quite in the gate, that's not what that's...
But they're, they're new areas, so, uh, you can see what you want to see, what the PUC said, or whatever, that's what I can do if you brought up those.
I'm, I'm not going to move forward with submitting anything to the PUC until there's clear direction here, because if we enter into the agreement, they're going to pay us money, and I'm going to do work for them, and they're going to be under the impression that that would continue if granted by the PUC, but I don't want, halfway through this process, and then, the property owner believes that they're entitled to something, and they paid for something, and that puts the borough under a regiment that they might be proceeding with something that they don't want to.
Yeah, I don't think we're to any point to be collecting any money from anybody. My understanding, we were just gonna reach out to the PUC and see if we were allowed to provide power without that.
Yeah, that's the preparation of a petition, that takes legal work to prepare and submit. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna call the property owner, I'm going to get that piece of information, but I'm not going for resigning agreement or changing...
Thank you.
Okay. And then, we'll have an action item on next month.
You're already providing power to people outside the borough.
Yes. So, other than that. Okay, were there any other questions on that?
Okay. Uh, the second item on here is update on the draft ordinance amendment related to the bees. Uh, I had begun preparing the ordinance amendment following the failed vote from last month to align an amendment with the State Beekeepers Association draft that we had mentioned. Uh, I think there's a lot of very helpful things in there, and especially the permitting program, which, uh, models the P.A.'s D-Log, uh, I think that would be helpful. Um, but whenever I was reviewing it, I noted a disclaimer with, uh, having solicitor reach municipal review, P.A.'s right to farm law and acre law, to make sure that any potential amendments that were incorporated were enforceable under those authorities in Pennsylvania. I have slight concern, um, with some of the protections that those bodies will apply, but I don't necessarily think it would prevent any amendment, I would just like to look into it further. I, in my research review, a complaint submitted to the Attorney General for enforcement and invalidation of a local ordinance that chose to do it via zoning amendments, uh, and they had to go through an administer, uh, something with the Attorney General that ended in settlement. So, uh, I'm going to look further into that, but I will have an amendment prepared that I feel comfortable presenting to the council, being enforceable. That's the update there.
I have a question for you.
All right.
Yes. Um, I, my original intent was to send the letter out enforcing the ordinance last week. Any particular reason for the dissuade? For the what? Dissuade on doing so?
Yes, I did not feel comfortable, or, did not feel comfortable with, one, in pursuing enforcement whenever amendments were anticipated, and then, two, I don't believe in the enforceability of the occupied prohibition as currently stated, given those authoritative bodies of law that I just referenced.
and then, two, I don't believe in the enforceability of the occupied prohibition as currently stated, given those authoritative bodies of law that I just referenced.
So there's no current restrictions other than what it states in the exotic ordinance?
I don't understand your question.
So there's no restrictions, so two hives, two hundred hives.
I'm not aware of any density, uh, restrictions, I was just under the impression that animal ordinance that it didn't provide it, like, earlier. There are, this is not to say that I don't think that density, uh, restrictions could be applied in here. Uh, they just make reference to a couple, in my opinion, conflicting advisory, um, models, I don't know how to, there are interest groups that prepare these, um, standards and regulations, but over and over again, they fall back on, um, verifying what is best for your community. So I think that there's further, um, research that needs to be done before we settle on some number that might be challenged as arbitrary. So, again, I, I think that an amendment is very welcome, I don't believe in current structure of the ordinance, but I would like more time to share something.
It seems like we're playing the awful lot to a certain ordinance that wasn't ordinance. The ordinance was violated, and it seemed like everything has been done to ignore it.
I think that.
If they wouldn't have been made or anybody else, they have been on the.
That ordinance as originally constructed was overly simplified, and I do not believe in its enforceability. I think that if the borough were to pursue enforcing the outright ban on, as set forward in that ordinance, it would get itself into an undesirable position with fighting for its legality.
So in five months, this is all the firm we've got?
Well, there were definitely different edges pushing in different directions, now, uh, it's a clear mandate to pursue something in line with the model ordinance, which I continue to make progress on. Like I said, the permitting program, I think, is a great idea, because that's following what P A D law sets forward. But whenever you're venturing into density limitations, it gets a little bit more murky with how you're setting things up.
Well, can I bring up that a lot, this has been done without the presence of council? You know, just like they were, it was advertised for the, to amend the ordinance or whatever. It was advertised for changing the meeting, who paid that money back?
I have not prepared anything other than directed by council, I want to make that clear. I started looking into the model ordinance as directed at the last meeting, and that was the first time that I had explored preparing draft amendments to the ordinance.
So you're saying when that ordinance was advertised in the paper, that was done illegally?
Yes.
Without, without a discussion from council?
You do, so the discussion is enabled by the advertisement, you cannot enact anything without it being done at a public meeting. The advertisement enables the deliberation for potential enactment. It does not carry any legal certificates other than set at the table for potential action.
But that was ready to be voted on last meeting.
Correct, and it was voted down because of a lax statute or issue.
No, I. voted down because you guys wanted some type of density requirement? Additional burgers put into the ordinance. My, my question is, P A Keepers Association puts a draft ordinance out, I don't think they would be going, and, and I, I sent this in an email, yes, spear the public or any municipality or government entity in the wrong.
At the very bottom of the front page of the ordinance, the model ordinance said, please keep in mind that right to farm act and the acre law may have some influence on what can or cannot be enacted and or looking for.
Correct, but it's a good step forward to base that on.
Okay, they have five months pass. I don't want it to get lost, I'm trying to say that I think that it has good structure to it, that I would support an amendment for. I just want to be mindful of where you set the limit on the density requirement, because in my mind, I see that as the likeliest avenue to challenge. I don't think anybody's going to challenge the permitting requirement, I think that's pretty clear and certain forward. And I think that flyaway barriers and items like that are reasonable safety precautions to be included. Uh, I'm, I want to make sure that whatever amendment that we've structured though, would also, uh, be legally sufficient with the density requirement.
How about zoning?
Zoning would be another avenue to explore, as I explained in the last meeting. I think that requires a little bit more process, which seemed to be disfavored by council last meeting. I'm open to exploring zoning amendments as well, but that would require submitting a draft ordinance before both, uh, the local planning commission and county planning commission, and holding a public hearing before an acting hand. So it, it's, it's an option, I'm not saying it's not an option, but it requires a little bit more.
The, the other concern I have with this would be the, the flood zone.
Yeah.
Flooding, and, and honestly, it, it's by choice, if, if any bees are to be kept near a waterway, which is understandable in the explanation, we need access to fresh water, get that. But without being zoned flooding, is that, I, I know there's no current laws preventing the bee of maintaining any kind of agricultural.
Well, that would be, that would be something to look at, I hadn't appreciated the context of the flood plan, because we're, we're doing this not just for any particular property, we're doing it for the whole area.
And for the future, yes, yes.
So that's, that's something that I'd be happy to look into as well as I continue to look at the, the density, uh, issue. So, yes, yeah.
I have motion to accept the, uh, solicitor's report? I'll make a motion. Second? Is there a second?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Alright, committee report, uh, voting grounds?
No.
Emergency management of the finance?
No.
Planning?
No.
Recreation, we have December second, six p.m., Christmas tree lighting, and there's a flyer, um, I guess by members of the, uh, Redland Theater group to, uh, see Christmas carols at the, uh, December second, uh, Christmas tree lighting. So we want to put down the basic. Sanitation sewer, nothing.
Uh, can I ask a question with sanitation sewer concerning the grinder box? On the other side of the railroad tracks, when is the next scheduled maintenance on that, as far as getting them cleaned?
I'd say probably in the next two, two years, within the next two years.
Yeah, how often do we do?
Between five and ten.
Okay, I'm just, I was curious, actually.
Does your boy want to continue to do it?
I don't know.
I don't know that. Well, that's something we need to look into too.
Why?
In the future. He said he didn't know if his boy was going to continue to do it, so we're going to have to find somebody that can if he doesn't.
Oh, oh, oh.
Let's, let's, let's.
Yeah.
What's the say over that?
Um, alright, streets and highways?
No.
Electric utility and water company?
Water company had to replace lines, two lines on the, pump somewhere on both ones.
Line, you said about one?
Yep.
Uh, zoning?
No.
Um, alright, I have a motion to accept the committee report? I have a question, did, did we question, um, reuse? Is that in the act anyway? The trash? So there's nothing going to be done to lower that track from thirty-seven to thirty-three?
No, not until, personally, you're wanting to do your.
Okay, I, I, is that, okay, fee schedule is done in the first meeting of the year.
Alright, thank you.
I may have a motion to accept the committee report.
Our second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close? Alright, unfinished business, uh, discussion, um, so last month we just talked about, uh, there's a recreation committee, um, so there's going to be a post going out to advertise, uh, for those who wish to, to join the rec- recreation committee, so they could be, uh, appointed. Um, some people we've already had some interest in it, uh, contacted the borough, um, we'll go and reach out to them to, uh, see if they're still interested, but, uh, there'll be posts to, uh, on the Facebook page and the website for those interested to submit their names, um, for consideration.
Is this the borough recreation?
Yes.
Or is it outside, because I don't know if something that I'm showing you about some like in the recreation committee?
West Shore, some were done with us.
No, this, the borough has an ordinance on the record for, we're supposed to have a seven-member recreation committee to, uh, recommend events and different recreation activities around the borough, in the parks. I just learned it was unfilled, and it's an ordinance on the books, and it's a committee that's open, there seems to be a lot of interest in it, so.
Do we have people?
We, well, yes.
Are we going to have all these people here to reord?
No, they're, they're appointed for seven years, um, six years.
Yeah, the ordinance has, I think, it's a, it's a fairly large committee and, uh, a big time timeline too, but it would be just getting people who are interested to serve on it, and it would be purely recommending by to do all for potential action. So it, it's, it's a way to, to delegate some, some of the interest for, for recreation around the borough.
Didn't Samantha actually do all that? Yeah.
But, but the, I wasn't aware it was committed on the books.
Yeah, I was, in the reorders, I was going to, like, ask Samantha if she would head that recreation committee, because she does a big job.
That'll be up to the committee, they, they will be able to, um, go organize, go hold meetings, uh, once, you know, by their schedule. Um, they will set a, a board chairman.
Who's they?
Recreation.
Whoever.
Somebody's going to need to be in charge of the recreation, you guys will be making the board, what they're saying.
Right.
So we will all be.
They'll, we'll appoint members, they will have a meeting, they will vote for a, a chairman.
That's what, okay, that's what I'm trying to get at.
But that's a committee outside of us.
Right. Would Samantha be eligible being a council person?
Any resident would be eligible.
Okay.
It's pretty common sometimes for other municipalities to have one member of borough council.
What I'm getting at is I'd really like to see Samantha, like, running that.
I'd like to see you.
What? Oh, you don't want to see that, that's dramatic.
Now, those recommendations through the committee, would that just be, would they come up with that, and would those recommendations be, like, brought through council?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would, they would have no ability to expend funds or enter into contracts. Well, uh, it also says they cannot commit funds or enter into contracts, so.
So everything they come up with and say, hey, this is, let's try, let's do this, or whatever, let's still go to the council.
Correct, they would, they would essentially have the designated point person to then make a presentation to you all, potential people.
So is there assignment, should you in the office or something for, or people assigned?
I'm going to be putting it out on the website tonight, um, or not tonight, but.
Is that exempt fundraising? Uh, like self-sales, uh, music in the park, they're doing a lot of, I see that up in Newbury, the rec committee is doing a lot of fundraising for the committee itself, for expenditures, to help stay involved, having the whole borough to spend borough money.
Well, then they have, the, there's a, we have a, a rec bank account that, that they will have access to. That's where, I mean, those funds are supposed to spend on recreation activities, so that's.
Are we getting that or are we going to pull it here?
Those, uh, bathroom money is the, uh, which turn accounts.
I didn't notice that, if that's something that can be done with the rec committee on, as far as fundraising goes, to, to help pay the money towards.
My, my understanding is that services like that are, they use fundraising as a mechanism to gain more deference from the borough, so, like, we are a substitution program rather than have splintered off into their own program entity, if that makes sense? So, okay, now we're in.
Yep.
Alright, uh, next item on the amended discussion regarding borough sponsor, Mears E celebration at the town square. Do you have any discussion on that?
The only comment I have is there was a post I wrote out, and everybody wants to keep the symbol, mine is like two people out of a hundred. And it is because it is a part of the history, you don't just erase history. I mean, if anything, the life comes down, we need a guy to come down and educate people, you know what I mean? It's, it's a part of the history, here it is, and it's just for fun. You know, that's all it is, a lot of people enjoyed it, and then a lot of people were looking for the visitor. That's the only thing I have to say about it. I mean, there's going to be a couple I should make that into the visitor.
Alright, do we have?
What extra things are going to be added?
Well, it's a secret. I can't give away.
Do we have the, uh, no secrets, probably?
I mean, I think last year was a great turnout, and people, and people really did like it. My family hid the food that was donated by Walmart, we prepared it and, you know, handed it out, and everybody said how rare a time it was and what they were looking forward to it. As far as the simple things, like, um, she said, you're never going to make everybody happy, and, you know, Rob put a lot of work into building it, making it, no one else was there helping, like, making the baseball or whatever else they wanted, he did that on his own. And I think the residents really, really enjoyed it last year, and, you know, I did check every six months for nuclear exposure for thyroid cancer, and I'm not offended by it.
Alright, so I need a, uh, motion to approve the coordination, to approve the amendment to the coordination of the borough office.
I'll make a motion.
I'll sign it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Thank you, guys.
So, um, get with Charlie about, about, uh, advertising it, organizing it, and, uh, insurance, insurance, roads. Um.
Okay, discussion on potential for a special meeting for the, uh, for the budget adoption and the tax ordinance.
Good, some further talks about this, I think we should be fine with coordinating everything at the December meeting. So I think we'll be fine with adopting the budget first, and then doing the tax ordinance afterwards at the same meeting.
So isn't the all change from this to them for like ten days as far as advertising?
Yes, so, I mean, I did have a dated copy of my book with me at the last, it made, it made it easier. So, but it's still, we would still have to advertise the tax ordinance, which has to be done after the budget adoption, so.
We still have time to talk.
Yep, we'll be, we'll be fine as long, but I will note if there are changes made to the budget, um, there is a time period whereby it has to be re-advertised for a certain amount of time. Uh, and we have to have a budget adopted by the end of the year, which is why we generally try to do it early on, but.
Is there any changes we need to make?
Not that I'm aware of, I just wanted to note it, it has to be done by the end of the year.
So, you're not going to use special?
I don't think so.
After the budget is accepted?
No, so we can, we can advertise as a tax ordinance, we have to approve it after it's been adopted, so, should be fine.
We won't necessarily. It's very much going with, with what?
We had to, uh, I guess they included the doubts from last month?
Yeah.
We amended it, I would be, I had to post that. Alright, discussion regarding the, uh, employees' handbook?
Yeah, I had circulated a draft of the handbook, um, and was provided with some comments or feedback from several of the employees to incorporate into it, uh, namely the benefit section to capture what's currently in place. I did not include the original draft, because we need to set up both old versions and all part-time employees. So I'm happy to incorporate that in and send out another big draft, or also feed any other feedback from anyone who might have reviewed it and wanted other changes incorporated, but it sounds like review is happening in other disturbing meetings.
Well, the only thing, uh, if I don't get you wrong, I think what we're doing is actually pretty good, uh, but when I submitted one of this, everyone had a fit about it, so, well, it was only thirty pages, did you knock it down to four or six pages? Well, I went through another day for the borough about the same number as this, and that's where I came up with mine. And I knocked it down to, I think, six pages, and now it's back up to thirty pages.
Yeah, I admittedly didn't see your original draft that people were, took exception with, but, uh, believe it or not, I did pare down the baseball. but I, believe it or not, I did pare down the base model that we have used in our office quite a bit to get to this current size, I believe I cut it in half actually. But uh, yeah, I, I would recommend being on the longer side rather than the shorter side, especially with the employee manager, we'd rather over explain and underestimate and stuff, um, that's just my opinion on it.
So you're coming up with another draft from other daycare that they-
Yeah, so I, I, I've gotten some feedback from several of the employees.
Yeah.
And to, to incorporate a chapter that I, I will add in and then redistribute the draft.
All right. Um, council person's comments? Ron? Jeanie? Rob?
Nothing.
Bill? Will? Uh, any more citizens' remarks, please, with the claims that you aim and add to the record? Please, make comments, three minutes.
Can I roll for a quick little word? Uh, question, I guess, process on the tax ordinance. I didn't see that advertised. I haven't seen that advertised yet, correct?
Right.
No, I don't think so. So can you explain the process along how ordinances have to be advertised?
Just generally?
Yeah.
Ordinance goes to newspaper, general circulation, has to be advertised more than-
Right, we'll start before that.
Okay, uh, council wants to approve that, right?
No.
And you should have.
It's my understanding that you don't have to approve and advertise an ordinance because it's not official action?
It's an expansion of laws?
There are certain processes that are in the normal course of business, but whenever uh, municipalities are under a crunch for timing, in my uh, experience, there is a certain threshold of uh, discretion given towards administrative staff and personnel to uh, for example, you're not going to go to them to spend some awful amount of money for every action, otherwise there would be stagnation of matters.
I, I'm looking, I can't find anything that supports that interpretation, uh, advertising ordinance, the introduction of indecision, and that's all part of the legislative process. And that's what I found, so I would just, I guess, ask you to kind of double check on that.
Legislative process defines-
In passing the ordinance, which is their legislative duty, taxes.
I'm not aware of your definition or reference to legislative process.
A passing ordinance would be legislative process.
So you're, you're saying that advertisement is a legislative process?
Part of the legislative process, announcing to the public that, that the ordinance would be considered one of the-
Similar to your research, I'm not aware of anything supporting that.
Yeah, it, it's, it's kind of a weird way, I just, I'm, I'm not used to, there's some, whoever it is, just decides what we have for council. Hey, we're going to advertise and we'll discuss with them, and hold an answer of that or whatever, we introduce to council first of all. So to me, it's just kind of a, let's say very murky, dirty, not most transparent way of doing things from being citizenaires and citizens, wanting to know, they would kind of want to, so, and I know you're, you're kind of, I'm under a time pressure on tax ordinance right now, but in the future, we, we kind of hash that in on the side, and let's process the transparency of the application.
I would certainly agree that following everything, I think this is the end of the best for everyone to follow.
All right, question.
Any other comments for citizens' remarks?
I just have, I just have a question. I heard there was a mandate for the um, New Year's Eve thing. Was it a unanimous that the Borough will sponsor or will they not?
There was no maze.
I'm sorry?
There was no maze. The motion passed.
Okay, thank you. I thought our board would have made it in there. Thank you.
Yep, um, new business, uh, um, we'll be also posting on the Facebook page and the website that we had one vacancy on the municipal authority board. So we'll be looking to fill that next month as well. Any interest, parties should contact the Borough to uh, be considered for appointment.
Will that be done in the New York?
No.
Did it become before the New York?
So there's going, there's an interesting timing element up there, right, where the term collapses at the end of the year?
Yeah, it's, it'll be till, um, till the end of twenty twenty-six, is when that term, I guess, will expire.
Oh, okay, I thought it was the end of twenty twenty-five.
No.
Did somebody drop off? Or somebody dropping off?
Somebody that's retired, yes.
Somebody that-
Retired. What's that?
Retired.
Yes, retired. Treasure's report, uh, council should have a copy. So discussion on the treasure report. Make a motion to accept the treasure report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Close? Uh, presentation of bills? The motion available? Second. All in favor? Close? Announcements among adjournments, any motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Close?